Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. I will call this meeting of Mayor and Council to order at six o'clock on this April 23rd, 2019. Our first order of business is our invocation given by Councilmember Matthew Monstahann and followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, everyone. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings on this meeting and for the people who are gathered here tonight. Please be with us and guide us as we serve our community. Bless us with a humble spirit and the wisdom we need to serve you as we serve the city of Villarica. We ask this in the name of our Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Okay, first up, we've got a couple of proclamations. Well, we've got one proclamation and one employee anniversary we'd like to recognize. And our first one is a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks' Week, and that would be May the 5th through the 11th. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the office of the municipal court, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas the office of the municipal court is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the office of the municipal court provides the professional link between the citizens, the governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas municipal courts have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the municipal court serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, I now therefore, Jeffreys, Mayor of the City of Villarica, do recognize the week of May the 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Alicia Doyle, and all other municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent." Dated this 23rd of April, 2019. Thank you, Alicia. Alicia keeps us all straight, and in some ways, she's the glue that kind of holds us all together. So, Alicia, thank you for everything that you do. Our second one is a recognition of an employee, and I believe Chief Mansour is going to handle
Uh-oh, a little confusion going on.
You're loud.
Well, there goes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all?
Fantastic. How are you?
All right. So, we're recognizing an employee, two employees, if that's okay, sirs and ladies.
There you go, Chief. Put it on tape.
You're loud enough. We want people at home to hear it.
Sir.
Over the video.
Okay. All right. So, first one is Jessica Whitlot. Jess has been with the department for five years. She came on as a receptionist, and after a little while as a receptionist, she decided that she wanted to be on the street to be an officer, at which time we sent her to the academy. She was like me, honored to graduate. No, no, graduate. Honored graduate, I'm sorry. No. But she did real well in the academy, came to work on the street, has done a very good job for us on the street, and so at this time, I'd like to recognize Jessica. One of the things that we decided to do to honor officers that have been with us for five years is we give them a badge number with their actual badge number on it, instead of just a regular badge. So, Jessica gets a new badge with a badge number 327. Congratulations.
I'm going to squeeze in the photograph here. Break the cameras. Thank you.
The second employee, and we have ordered your badge. We already had one for 327s, why Jessica got hers, but we've ordered you a new badge. And the good news is, is that you'll get the new design, see? So, your badge will not say Patrolman, it will say Officer, and it will have a different inside circle. So, it's cool. It's very nice. So, Chiquita has been with us for five years. Chiquita came over from West Georgia Ambulance. So, if any of y'all ever had experience with EMTs and all, she was unbelievable, did an awesome job, decided she wanted to come be a police officer, try something new. She has just hit the, you know, pavement running, has done an awesome job for us. We're thrilled to have her and hope we keep her for a lot more years. So, congratulations, Chiquita. And your paperwork's on the way, but it's not here yet.
Notice a lot of promises from the chief, yeah?
You believe half of them.
Oh, I forgot I had a mic on everybody earlier. Thank you, ma'am.
Chief, hey, Chief. Are all the other officers who have a badge number, are they going to get new badges? Is it new style?
Not right off, no, sir. There are about 150 apiece, so we try to gradually bring them in.
Thank you, Chief. I've said this many, many times, but we are certainly proud of our men and women in blue. They keep us safe here in the City of Villarica, and, you know, more often than not, you hear bad things on TV and everywhere else, but our men and women, led by our chief, do a fantastic job for us, and we appreciate that. Okay. Next order of business is the adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
One issue, actually, if I may point out. It looks like under governing body, A, the result is adopted. I think it should say unanimous there.
Whoa, 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 you're on the minutes. We're just adopting the agenda right now.
I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself again. I apologize.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, to approve. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay?
All right.
We have reached the public comments portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give a public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Nancy Linn, 17th and Haverhill Trail, Villarica. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I would like to take this opportunity to invite everyone to our workshop tomorrow for Historical Preservation Commission, because we will be taking a look at all of the historical proposed sites that we'd like to put on the registry. It will be here, followed by a call meeting at 5:30. Thank you.
John Hannaback, 306 Golfer's Way. Question, will there be public comments during the presentation regarding the, what's it called, the revitalization?
That's not normally the case, but it's the council's.
Well, I'd like to make some comments about the revitalization. This came before planning and zoning earlier this month, with a lot of discussion about it, a lot of concern about the revitalization plan. Included among is the fact that this is a plan we almost have to approve. We did not approve it. We sent it forward to the council, but basically, the material that's presented is really more of feedback of our own plans, plans we've already approved, the Con Plan, the Golden Nugget Plan, et cetera. And there is not much of a plan associated with this. And in fact, in our discussion, we're not even sure that the land that is being considered for this revitalization is really adequate for the purposes. You know, we're interested in Wenton properties coming in to do their thing. We visited their facilities, they're great, but I don't think that this plan, as they presented in the revitalization, is adequate for what they want to do. Plus, it seems to me that it is doing a disservice to the people who live in old town properties now, because they're being moved out with the idea of making that land available. That just seems unfair to me, to be moving out these people from their apartment. Now, granted, they're not being thrown out, they're being moved out, but new people are not being allowed to move into that facility, and that just does not seem fair to me. Plus, I've got problems with the Housing Authority's participation in this. First off, I don't know where the authorization for the Villarica Housing Authority comes from. I know that it's authorized by the state, but I can find nothing in any of our material that this council has gone ahead and adopted the housing authority. Yet they have tremendous power. They have, in some respects, more power than the council. They have the power to borrow money, they have the power to do loans, all kinds of stuff. And yet, again, according to our website, I have seen no postings of any meetings that the Housing Authority has had. There's none that are on the website. So, have they been involved in this process? I know Dictambers has been, but Dictambers is not listed on our website as part of the Housing Authority. So, I've got a lot of questions, a lot of confusion about what's going on with this revitalization plan, and if somebody can provide me word of all as to where the Housing Authority is authorized by this council for Villarica, I would appreciate it. So far, nobody has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm Alan Whitley, and I'm a homeowner in Mirror Lake. My wife Judy and I are at 9765 Spyglass Drive. So, the reason I'm here tonight is I have a pile of limbs sitting on my curb outside my house, and it's going on week five. So, the reason for that is I'm looking for resolution to a policy I believe was passed earlier in the year. First of all, after having talked to a couple of people, I know I talked to Gil, I talked to Jeff, and I talked to Tom Barber as well, I understand that the city needs to recover costs that are associated with curbside pickup, and particularly maybe abuse that is by contractors. But I object to this new policy for loads deemed larger than average. So, I've been told that what's driving the increased cost is this tipping charge that the city has to pay. I know that what we put out on the curbside is limbs. I'm guessing that probably becomes mulch for the city, but I don't know for sure. But regardless, there's a difference in what homeowners put out and what contractors put out, and surely you guys would recognize that. So, as a homeowner, I put things out maybe three to five times a year. Usually, that follows a pretty specific order. Do something in the winter before spring gets here. That's not very much, because nothing's growing. I do spring limb trimming, put that out. We probably do shrubs once or twice in the summer, and then in the fall, there's some more limbs, and that's about it. So, if contractors are abusing this in a huge way, I understand. But I pay $7.50 a month regardless of whether I put anything out or not. So, I put things out three, four, five times, and I don't know what the math is on that, but I'm somewhere probably under what I would consider fair trade. And by the way, I appreciate very much the city providing that service. It means a lot. Villarica's very good like that. But I'm really having trouble with the fact that, you know, four weeks ago, I put out my spring limbs, and then Friday morning, I heard the truck, just like always, and instead of having the limbs picked up, I had a big old yellow tag on my door saying, "We'd like $50." Come on. So, you know, basically, there was where somebody had taken a measuring tape and said, "Oh, it's this long, and it's this long, and it's this high." Well, if you're going to measure by volume, it doesn't have very much volume to it, because limbs have a lot of space between them. Limbs are inherently fairly long, anyway. So, if that's going to be the game, I can always chop that stuff up and compress it into a little pile, and then I guess it'll fit in whatever, you know, whatever box was deemed appropriate. But it just doesn't make sense. I just don't see how this is reasonable to enforce, and really, I don't see why you want to punish the homeowner for something contractors are doing. There's got to be a better way than that. If you need to tag all the contractors and say, "Look, regardless of what you're doing, we're going to charge you a dumping fee for the year," whatever, then do that. But, you know, kind of having a hard time with this. So, you know, I don't feel like I ought to be paying the $7.50, occasionally putting stuff out, and then paying above that just for the stuff that I do put out. So, that's kind of my viewpoint on it. I hope you guys will take this into consideration. I know that there was some discussion of bringing this up for some adjustment or vote. Really be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Prissy Sullivan, 207 North Avenue. It came to my attention earlier in the week that the council was considering contracting the city attorney and the chief of police. Now, I think David has been here over 20 years, and I know Chief Mansour's been here quite a while. Why are we messing with something that's working just fine? I also want to point out that one of the last times that we had a contracted person as a city manager, it wound up costing this city a pretty penny. Now, as it stands now, if Mr. Mecklin or Chief Mansour are not doing their job, they get fired. Fine. And you're not having to pay excess amounts because you're buying out their contract. Also, if you are going year to year on a contract, that means that the council, I suppose, can just not renew your contract, probably don't even have to give a cause. That's going to involve rent a cop and rent a lawyer, where they might only be here a year, neither of which is acceptable. So, I wish you would consider not adding more paperwork to a system that is already overburdened with paperwork, and put things up in the air that don't need to be. We, in this town, me in particular, like consistency. I want to know when I'm walking down the street and see the chief of police, it's the same one I saw yesterday. And I like coming to the city council meetings knowing that the city attorney is David Mecklin. I don't see why we'd need to muck any of this up with a contract. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Kirk Craft at 2406 Ridge Lake Drive. This is a follow-up to a meeting I had with several of the all up here. The chief of police, Michael Mansour, was instructed by his boss, city manager Tom Barber, Mayor Jeffreys, and Councilman Gil McDougall to conduct an investigation of an incident involving my cellphone, where a Russell Cellular employee downloaded another customer's information to my phone without that customer's username or password. On August the 20th, 2018, Mansour submitted his report, which I have here, and concluded I have looked into the incident several times, and this is important, have discussed it with other law enforcement, the GBI, our district attorney's office, and all agree that this is a civil matter, and there is nothing criminal involved. He goes on to say, "Based on all this information and the fact that Mr. Craft," that's me, "did pursue monetary compensation, $2,000, and an iPhone, I'm officially closing this case. Since receiving his report, I filed open records requests for a change, not with Alyssa, but with the city, well, actually, one, with the City of Villarica, the District Attorney's Office, and the GBI. The names given to me as the contact people have no records, emails, notes, texts, recorded phone calls, or anything that says Michael Mansour ever contacted them." I have copies of this, if y'all ever want to, some of them I've sent, but I have had copies of this for quite a while now, if y'all need to verify any of this. The City of Villarica says the same, there is no records of any conversations between any of these parties. In addition, Mansour failed to mention all of my conditions with Russell Cellular, the number one being that they issue a statement as to the exact procedure as to what happened to my phone, which I've yet to receive. And I knew at the beginning of this, and the frustration of looking into this, was because of just the nature of the crime. It was very complex, it was a quasi-identity theft and all that, and that was why originally I asked for a GBI investigation. It wasn't to insult anybody, but it was just everyone that I talked to, from IT professionals on down, had no idea how this girl did what she did. And to this day, no one has, including the district attorney's office, has been able to say how she did it. So, I'm returning to my original request I made a year and a half ago, that the GBI investigate this, but also, I'm very concerned as to the report that was turned in to you by Chief Mansour. So, I'm requesting a police officer standard training group to investigate it and/or the GBI, to see if any laws are violated, specifically OCGA 1610-1 and 1610-20. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comments portion of the meeting, and we will move into council updates. Any council updates? I just want to thank our city manager, Tom Barber, for the meeting that we had last Friday. It was on Good Friday, but we all met, and it was a very good meeting. I would consider it probably one of the top meetings that we've had since I've been here as a mayor. I thought, especially for Matt, being new on the council, it was good for him, because Tom went over, "Oh, my lord, how many projects? 60, 260 projects?" Something like that. But a lot of projects, and it was probably valuable to Matt, but I think all of us got a little bit from that, and it's good when we're all hearing the same thing at the same time. So, there was a very good meeting, and I have encouraged Tom, and would hope that the council would be on board, too, and maybe having those on a quarterly basis, to just, you know, get us all on the same page, so we all are pulling in the same direction. So, thank you, Tom. Okay. If there are no other council updates, we will move into Tab A, governing body. Council, you have the minutes of the April 9th, 2019, meeting.
Here you go, Matt. This is where you do it at.
Yeah, here we go. Under Tab A, on the minutes, now that I lost my minutes, it says that the adopted vote was 301, and I think it should be unanimous there instead of 301, because if you look at the I's, there are five I's there. So, I think that was an error. Underneath A, A1, under adoption of the agenda. Oh, no, I'm sorry, wrong one. No, I apologize. Governing body, approval of the minutes, I apologize, where it says adopted vote 301 abstained. I think it should say adopted unanimous.
Well, it wasn't, though. You abstained.
No, I abstained on the 26th, I abstained, but not the last minute meeting, to approve those minutes.
It says the 26th.
No, this is the vote where we had...
This is March 26th minutes.
Right, where we approved the minutes at the...
That was your first meeting?
Wait a second.
And on your first meeting, you abstained from the approval of?
Right, no, but this is the vote on April 4th, where we approved the March 26th minutes, where I did abstain, yes, but I did not abstain on April 4th.
You want to table this? You need to take a look at it, go back and correct the record?
Yes, because I'll look back. Excuse me, April 9th.
Let's table this to the next meeting, and let Alyssa go back and correct the minutes.
Motion to table, do I have a second? Motion, a second, to table to the next meeting. All in favor? Thank you. Item number two is adoption of the community revitalization plan prepared by Canvas Planning Group in partnership with the City of Villarica Housing Authority. Who's going to present this?
Want to table it? Because I don't mind.
My apologies. My name is Maureen Freehill. I'm with Walton Communities. We are here for the adoption of the revitalization plan. We presented at the last city council meeting on April 9th. We are certainly here to answer any questions that you all may have regarding this plan and the work that Canvas has done, pulling together information regarding the great work you guys are doing in the Old Town neighborhood.
Just want to make a comment, since there were some questions about it in public comments. Tom, if you can get with them and with Mr. Chambers, who's also in the meeting in the room tonight, and get some good answers to those questions. I think they all have answers, we just need to provide those.
Certainly, absolutely. We're more than happy to.
Thank you.
I did have a question. I just wanted to ask, now, y'all are the Canvas Planning Group.
I'm with Walton Communities, which is a developer.
You're with Walton, you're Canvas, okay. Did Walton or did the Housing Authority hire the canvassing group?
So, we're partnered with the Housing Authority as a development team, and we hired, the development team hired the Canvas Planning Group.
Okay, got that. All right. I think that's all I had for you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What is it we'll be adopting? Just the plan?
Excuse me, what was your question?
We're not adopting the layout of what they're going to put over there. We're just adopting the plan?
That's correct, just the plan.
Just to revitalize the area.
And not directed to them specifically, but just to reiterate something that Mr. Hannaback brought up, because I got asked this question also, was that people are moving, I know they've got to relocate everybody eventually when the buildings start demolition, then building, if this goes forward, but in the meantime, as people move out, they are not filling the apartments, and so I had some, I had also been asked, what happens with people who need to get into public housing if there's less and less availability in Villarica? What do those people do?
So, allow me to answer kind of both kind of sides of that question. So, regarding the relocation, Villarica Housing Authority is not only obligated, but will, already has plans in place for the relocation of those tenants. They will, you know, pay for their moving expenses, help them find a new place that's affordable to them. Secondarily, those residents have a right to return to the development that's built at the Old Town Homes currently. So, while, it would be a temporary relocation for individuals that are seeking public housing currently, I know that they're, you know, let Dick kind of speak to waitlists and how they're managing that, but part of our intention with this redevelopment is to provide greater affordable housing opportunities. And so, while there is less public housing opportunity now, in the long term, we're hoping to provide a much larger volume of affordable units for folks to be able to access. Does that answer your question?
And that makes sense, but one of the concerns I have, and what's been brought up to me, is that as these leases or current leases are running out, those homes are not being filled again, right? We've got vacant...
We have, the Housing Authority has a number of residents who've lived there for a long time. It's not that they're not renewing leases, it's that as people move out, they're not moving someone in behind them. So, no one's having a lease terminated at this time. Does that make sense?
Sure, involuntarily.
Correct.
They're not being, but as they vacate through a natural process, they're not being filled.
They're not being filled, correct. That way, there's not as many tenants...
So, there is a lack of public housing because of that while this process is going on.
While this process is going on, that's correct.
And I think that's the larger, that's the larger concern.
Certainly.
There are a number of questions about this, but at this stage, I don't have a real problem with giving some approval to go ahead, but I think there are a lot of unanswered questions that we're probably going to... questions that we're probably going to want to look at a little closely.
Yeah.
A little more closely, because it does seem like an overwhelming change in the plan over there for that area, and what's going to be happening, how long will it take, and how many folks are displaced, and where they will be. They are still part of our community.
Absolutely, and that's our top concern too at Walton, we're highly tenant-focused, and we take extreme care with our residents, and I think that, I appreciate that you guys are so thoughtful about what's going on with those residents and making sure that they are taken care of, and I just want to make sure that we kind of realize that it's a, hopefully, a short-term pain for a greater reward, to be able to not only rehouse the residents there, but be able to provide more opportunities for other households. And part of the reason that they're not releasing them is so, releasing the units is so that there are not as many individuals impacted as part of this process in the short term, because those folks that are on waitlists currently will be able to apply to the new property when it becomes available. So that waitlist doesn't disappear, that opportunity is still available to them.
From the time you move the residents out until you start moving them back in, what is the timeframe on that?
So, it depends on the length of time that demolition takes. Obviously, they're very old buildings, there's likely to be some abatement that we'll have to do to make sure that they're safe, but from when we start construction until the doors are opened, it'd probably be about eighteen months after demolition is complete.
And you're not going to start demolition until everyone's out, is that...
Oh, of course, yeah, absolutely. We would never start demolition with residents on site, no.
Okay, now, we toured your community in Marion, and it was a goodie community. Is this going to be a goodie community?
It is.
Okay.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
I do have a question for staff. The staff recommendation doesn't really give a recommendation on this, it basically just states that unfortunately, this site won't be able to accomplish what the twelve-acre site would do, so I don't know if that leads us to believe then that staff will recommend that we don't approve this, or our staff will recommend we do approve this, but if we get some clarification on that.
Tom?
One of the requests that will be coming before you is the abandonment of Walnut Drive, which runs through the center of the project, and that will have a great impact, I think, on the ability of the new development to be similar to the village which we saw and liked. If we decide not to do that, then the site is much more challenging. There's utilities in that road, and it basically chops the largest contiguous piece of land in half that they would have to work with. So at this point, I think we should approve the plan, and then depending on what you do with Walnut Drive, I think that's going to impact how we like the proposed site development.
That's really what I'm referencing. I don't really have a problem with adopting this plan, but I do think there are a number of pieces of this that we need to be involved in, and John raises some good questions with regard to the housing authority. I've raised them here before, I've discussed a number of ways that we should probably be more involved, but that really is a discussion for us to have in the near future. I don't intend to have it tonight, but those points are exactly what I'm referencing. When I talk about, once we get past this, I don't mind doing this plan tonight, but there's just a number of pieces that we've got to understand better before we give the full go on this. And some of the commitments that are required from the city. I sit on the Housing, the Standing Committee for Housing, there are a number of commitments that the Housing Administration has made, in my view, on behalf of the city, that they should not have done, and maybe they haven't finalized it, but there'll be more questions to come after this, but I'm okay with this phase, with this stage right here.
But I've got a problem with this phase, and I think we should have abandoned Walnut Drive before we approved the plan, so they'll have something to work with, and still leaves it up in the air as to how we're going to put the plan together.
That's process, Tom, what are you, is this the right process? Is this the right...
As far as Walnut Drive, does it help them if we did that first?
It's not part of, to me, it's not a consideration for whether you approve the plan or not.
Okay.
But it affects the plan.
You ready for a motion?
It will affect the ultimate development that goes there.
Right.
Right, well, but we'll get to that at a different stage, is kind of what we were talking about.
Yeah, they're not going to hear back on the tax credits, Maureen, until the end of the year, right?
That's correct.
So you're not going to start turning dirt until 20 anyway.
Exactly.
And you know, all this, it's got to be really confusing if you're sitting out there, because it's federal property over there, and these places were built like in, what, 1950s? Isn't that right? And the repairs and everything else, all I can say is if we move forward with a plan like this, it is, the word superior is not good enough, not big enough, for the transformation of what is there now and what we are moving toward, and what will be provided for people at all age levels, you know, maybe single parent, maybe retired, it is just so superior to what we have and what will be there for low-income people, affordable housing. So, I move that we adopt the Community Revitalization Plan for the City of Villarica.
Second. I have a motion to second, any discussion, further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all. Lots more information to come. Tab B, Community Development, Bobby?
Good evening, everybody. We have Tab ABL-04-19, Alcoholic Beverage Pouring License Application for Wine, Malt Beverages, and Distilled Spirits, for Luther's Bistro LLC doing business as Brothers Roadhouse. The applicant is Luther's Bistro LLC doing business as Roadhouse, Brothers Roadhouse, licensee is Adam Luther Anderson, 647 Emberwood Drive, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. The location of the restaurant is 901 South Carroll Road, Land Lot 131, 6th District, Carroll County, Ward 2. The applicant has complied with the ordinance with regard to legal notification requirements, and has successfully passed the background check conducted by the Villarica Police Department. Also, there are no location zoning restrictions that would hinder the issuance of this license. Based on that, staff has recommended approval, and I understand the applicant is present tonight.
Any questions for staff? This was discussed at the last meeting, but are there any new questions for staff?
This is the one where they didn't show up in the last meeting, okay.
There are no, would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address?
See, my name's Adam Anderson, 647 Emberwood Drive, and I apologize for last week, I thought I was waiting for an inspection first, so I didn't think I was on the meeting board of the council, so I didn't get a call, but, any questions?
Any, does the council have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Adam, I see that this is Luther's Bistro LLC doing business as Brothers Roadhouse. Have you filed the Brothers Roadhouse trade name application with the Superior Court yet?
I actually have my tax person add, because I've got my twin brother back there, and he's actually going to be part of this, is why we changed it to Brothers Roadhouse, but it has been filed with the state on the name change as doing business as Brothers Roadhouse, so, yes. It's been filed on the, when I did my taxes, because I did this, opened up LLC back in December or some of November, so she filed that taxes, put in the name change, so it'll be, it'll be, if that's what you're asking, so it's all...
Well, I was asking about, usually you have to file a trade name application with the Superior Court of Carroll County, not with the state. If you're filing LLC, you file it with the state, obviously, but, Secretary of State, but...
No, I didn't know nothing about what's your...
David, if the applicant is Luther's Bistro for this alcohol license, and they have a DBA of Brothers Roadhouse, how does that affect what they call themselves, if at all?
I don't think it, for this purpose, I don't think it affects anything. I mean, you're issuing the license to Luther's Bistro LLC, which is the legal entity. If they call themselves something different, it really doesn't impact the fact that the license is held in the name of the limited liability company.
If at some point in the future they created another DBA, would that have any effect?
No.
Okay.
You can't do it, Maureen. I mean, it's not going to affect, not only is the company licensed, but the individual is licensed, if there is a problem, no matter what it's called, you'll be who we come to see.
Right.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage application.
David, we have new comments?
Yeah, I think we need to ask to see if there's any public comments, since this is a new business, not a renewed...
Any other questions for the applicant while he's here? Just stick around if there are none.
One point that we always do make is that you understand what the drinking age is in the state of Georgia, and that there's a great prohibition against selling to underage people. Our police department, under leadership of the entire team, is always very good about occasionally checking in an undercover basis as to whether or not people are selling underage people. You're not going to let that happen, I take it.
No, sir. I've already learned a lot in five years, and I've already been arrested for not selling alcohol, but not having the proper license at one time. It was just due to technicality, so, we have everything fixed, we're ready to go, we've got some help, and we're going to have the stakes back, so...
And I always mention this, so in the name of consistency, we had a young person in this community that bought alcohol in another county, and that young lady lost her life several years back, and that's very near and dear to my heart, so I always mention that, that this community and this mayor takes that very serious. So if there's any question, you need a card, and whoever's there with you needs a card.
Yes, sir.
Including the mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak for or against this request, please do so at this time. Seeing none, it will revert back to the council.
I make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage application for Luther's, I think that's incorrect, so let me read the name, Luther's Bistro LLC, located at 901 South Carroll Road, Villarica, 30180.
Second. I have a motion in two seconds, any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Tab C, Economic Development, Janet?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have before you two items. The first item is a 2019 alcohol license agreement for the June 15 Summer Concert for Wet Willie. This is a license agreement with Olive Tree and the City of Villarica to provide the sale of beer and wine for the June 15 Summer Concert, again, with Wet Willie. The concert will be held Saturday, June 15, from 8:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. at the Mill Amphitheater. The summer concert agreement is a 50/50 split between Villarica Main Street and the Olive Tree, and we've not had any issues in the past with summer concerts as far as alcohol being sold is concerned. Staff recommends the Olive Tree be used for the purpose of beer and wine sales for the June 15 Summer Concert to be held again Saturday, June 15, 2019, 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Mill Amphitheater.
I always get this question, you cannot bring alcohol into the venue, you have to buy it at the venue.
Correct.
Got you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question, because I haven't asked this before, and it just kind of came up, because we are doing a 50/50 split now with Olive Tree, and you said Main Street, and I was curious, because I didn't know if it's Main Street or the city, do any, and only the profits are counted, the split is above their cost and paying for their employees.
Correct.
Does any of the profit go back to defray, to the general fund to defray the cost of event? Does it go back to Main Street?
The money goes back to Main Street.
Okay, it goes to Main Street. Does any of the money that goes back to Main Street, is any of that used to defray the cost of the event?
Correct.
It is, okay, all right. All righty, I think that's all I had, yep.
That's a long one, can somebody else do it?
Yeah, I'll do it. I make a motion to approve the license agreement with Olive Tree to provide the sale of beer and wine at the first summer concert of 2019 to be held Saturday, June 15, 2019, from 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Mill Amphitheater.
Second. I have a motion to second, council discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed?
I'm sorry.
It is 3-1.
I was, I was okay, no, I'm sorry. I was within favor.
Insurance is not here.
I was just slow.
So you voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. Okay, item number two?
The second item is the 2019 Community Development Grant Disbursements. The Villarica Community Development Grant Program was established by the City of Villarica to foster and fund activities, projects, special projects, sporting events, and programs that promote eligible tourism and cultural activities within the city. The city intends the program to be used to increase economic activity, to bring tourists to the city through development of local events, festivals, and sporting events. The program is to promote the city of Villarica within the city boundary and beyond, to provide support of local community groups or tax-exempt organizations under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, who promote the city, to enhance neighborhood vitality and economic development, so that all citizens and visitors may participate in the diverse cultural life of the city, to promote business within the city. This past, there were a couple of meetings ago, the city council voted to set a deadline beginning in 19, two and above for all applications to be turned in at the same time, so that the Main Street Advisory Board could view them all at once and then disperse the money. The Main Street Advisory Board met in a special-called meeting held Thursday, April 4th, at 9:00 a.m. at City Hall. We had three applications turned in by that, the Friday, March 29 deadline. The Villarica Arts Coalition turned in an application for $2,973. Thomas Dorsey Foundation, $10,000 for the 25th anniversary event this year, which is a three-day event, June 28 through 30, and then the Villarica Golden City Lions Club, $7,040 for their Taste of Villarica event. So the Main Street Board unanimously voted to award Thomas Dorsey Foundation $10,000, and the Villarica Golden City Lions Club $7,040 for the Taste of Villarica. They did, also voted not to award the Villarica Arts Coalition $2,973, as that particular entity had been awarded $10,000 in February from the Conventioners and Visitors Bureau Board in their monthly meeting. Staff recommends that we award Thomas A. Dorsey Foundation $10,000, and the Villarica Golden City Lions Club to be awarded $7,040 for the Taste of Villarica. We will take the remaining balance and post it online for someone else to apply, so that we can award the total amount of $20,000, because we think somebody should have that opportunity to be awarded the remaining amount.
How is this compared to last year?
Last year, we had $15,000 to disperse, this year, we have $20,000 to disperse, so we're within that budget of the amount that we've recommended to award.
Questions for staff?
This might be more of a comment, actually, for the people applying for the grants than anyone else, and for full disclosure, I am a member of the Lions Club, so I belong to one of the recipients here, but my concern for the future is if next year, if we get five or six applications, some decisions are going to have to be made about who's going to get what amount, are the same people going to get it again, and my warning to these groups would be, any warning when you get a federal grant, federal grants are not forever, and, I mean, not federal grants, any government grant. Sometimes the money dries up, sometimes it disappears, it gets diverted somewhere else, and so my warning to these groups would be not to be too dependent on these grants, and to be prepared if it's not, especially if more applications come in next year, and all of a sudden that amount gets divvied up five different ways or something. I did have a question on page four, it says review of criteria, it says that they're supposed to project their anticipated attendance, and whether it's city residents versus... and whether it's city residents versus non-city residents? Who reviews that, or how do they even verify that? I mean, unless we're doing surveys. I've done bicycle events and other places where all the participants filled out a thing. How much money did you spend? Did you stay at a motel? Did you stay overnight? Do we do that? Okay, so that's not happening, okay. Because it's still in there, maybe we want to take it out if that's not going to be a part of it. Also on page six, Section F, Project Budget. Are the applicants doing that? It's, it's like a project where they have to complete all this information regarding their budget. Do we do that?
They're basically turning in an atomized list of projected costs, whether it be renting a tent, renting a chair, attendance, that's, you know, they're.
Okay, because this looked really complicated. So maybe, maybe we should review that and see what we're using, what we're not using, and maybe we should talk about whether we should discard what we're asking them for that we're really not asking for. Maybe just update it. Because I would, I read through all of it, because the Thomas Dorsey included all that information on the application. So, anyway, I just had some questions about that, and I think you answered them. Thank you.
Cool. Any other questions for staff? Okay, not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Main Street Advisory Board's vote to award Thomas Dorsey Foundation $10,000 for their 25th Anniversary Festival, and the Villarica Golden City Lions Club, $7,040 for the Taste of Villarica event.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. As far as discussion is concerned, there has been some talk on the council about one of these groups applying to another one of our committees and being awarded an amount of money. And I would just caution staff and our city manager to watch that. It's not really fair to double-dip, and if that's any of these groups, and that's any group, intention to get those funds somewhere else, they probably need to seek that and leave those funds for someone else to apply to, rather than us have to come back now and re-advertise to try to do that. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And since we're doing discussion, I just want to ask you, how do you advertise? You, you said you only had three applicants, and it looks to me like you're going to have $977 left over that you said you would give to another applicant if they came along. How do you advertise this to the public at large so that other people? Because these are the same names I saw last year.
Sure.
These are the same names every year.
I think some people are obviously not aware of it, so we do put it out on the city's website, our Facebook page, the Mill Amphitheater's Facebook page, and the city's Facebook page. That's how we're currently advertising it. We certainly could probably do radio or newspaper advertisement moving forward so that we can get more people educated about the grant. A lot of people don't know about it. That's correct.
I think we should do that, and to Leslie's point, if we did that, we'd be making more decisions about how we split this money up, rather than just whatever is asked for.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The March Coalition got the 2973, and that did not come out of the 20,000, is that correct?
We actually did not award them the 2973, so that remaining money, I think, that's left to award would be $2,960, when we remove the 10,000 and the $7,040. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to add that it's not like anybody can just come up and ask for the grant. There are certain criteria that you have to meet as to bringing people into the city and benefits that are to the city and community at large.
I think the application's seven pages.
So it's bringing down.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion in a second. All in favor? All, all opposed? And I think we have one outstanding, because she's on the Lions Club.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tab D, Pete?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item I have tonight is a request for emergency purchase for engineering services for the inspection of dam structure 29 and 31, and respectively, that is Lake Fashion and Lake Cowan. We're required by EPD to conduct, to have an engineer of record to perform an annual inspection of these dams. And we have used Walden Ashworth and Associates to develop our emergency action plans for the dams, which was also a requirement. They are also the engineer of record for Mirror Lake. And we, EPD conducted an inspection of Mirror Lake Dam. I believe it was in February this year, and we've got their letter from their inspection report toward the end of March. And there was a requirement in here that was reminding the City of Villarica that we had not obtained a permit for construction and operation of Mirror Lake Dam. So Walden and Associates are extremely busy. I was looking to get ahead of the curve with these two structures I just mentioned. But when this came on the horizon, he was going to provide the follow-up for the HOA. Walden and Associates were going to do the follow-up on that. And so when I talked with him, I tried to accomplish a couple of things, and this is what turned into emergency, to try to address this issue, be part of the inspection with Mirror Lake, and also get him to do the inspection for the other two dams that we need the annual inspections on. So a lot of good things came out of that conversation that I think we'll probably talk a little bit here later, but basically the proposal was to solicit them for their engineering services to get this accomplished, for the inspection of those two dams. They had already been engaged by the HOA to do the response to the EPD inspection.
Pete, I guess I'm a little bit confused.
Yep.
If this is an annual inspection, why is it an emergency purchase?
Because he was so busy, I was concerned that he would not, I would not be able to get him to come out and address the issue also with Mirror Lake. And when Mirror Lake had, had instructed him to come out, or engaged him to come out to do the follow-up on that, there was an opportunity to do both of these dams at the same time. Back when they did, EPD did the inspection in 2017, they actually did three dams in one day. They did Mirror Lake, and then they followed up with the two structures I'm talking about right now. So I wanted to take advantage of that, because I was, I was afraid farther down the line, I wouldn't be able to get to the issue about Mirror Lake in this, by this timeline. They gave us a deadline in the EPD report that we had to have this application for a permit for construction and operation of Mirror Lake Dam by April 26th, which is Friday. So I was trying to get as many birds with one stone as I possibly could and see, you know, if we could get the issue resolved with, with Mirror Lake, if there was an issue at all.
This is for $3,000?
Mm-hmm.
So I think the question probably revolves around the word "emergency," especially since these were budgeted dollars. I understand exactly what you're talking about, but I think that there would be a natural assumption that emergency is emergency, but you just mean we need to get it, we need to get this approved soon as possible so you can engage them for these services.
Right, and if there was also, if there was a need for this application to go forward, which also speaks to ownership of the dam, okay? That I'd, I'd rather have done due diligence and get ahead of that than wait for this Friday to pass and that deadline.
Okay.
We were warned back in, or required, I won't say warned, we were required back in October 2016 that there was going to be an ownership requirement in Mirror Lake Dam on behalf of the city, in the eyes of EPD.
Okay, the Mirror Lake, 29 and 31, neither one of those are Mirror Lake, are they?
No, they're not.
But the emergency purchase is for those two?
It is, yes.
He's just adding.
But this, the scope of this expanded to include Mirror Lake.
We need David to explain to y'all what the issue is.
Back when this, back when the city took over Mirror Lake Parkway, which was three years ago, y'all, y'all, or not y'all, but the council debated the issue of whether or not to take Mirror Lake Parkway, because if we took ownership of Mirror Lake Parkway, which is the road running over the dam, the EPD was going to consider the city to be a, an owner of the dam along with the Mirror Lake Homeowners Association, just because we control part of the dam, the road over it. We entered into an agreement with the Mirror Lake Homeowners Association that said that they have responsibility for the dam, that they would indemnify the city for any expenses on the dam, and in fact, that they would maintain an insurance policy with us as the named insured insuring the dam. So in our eyes, the Homeowners Association is responsible for the dam. In the eyes of the state, we, we too are responsible for it so that if something happened out there, they would come looking to the city as well as to the Homeowners Association. And I, from my understanding, you know, we, we've had to re, make, make sure that the Homeowners Association is doing everything that's supposed to be done, be doing with the dam. My understanding is that they have been.
We have a good relationship with them, and they've got a, a great engineer that is representing the HOA, David Branning with Joffe Land Company. And he's been extremely helpful.
So I, I've just been made aware that, you know, the state had asked us to fill out some applications a few years ago, which we may, may not have done, and we may need to do, but I, I don't know that we're in a huge trouble with the state right now.
Well, when they give us a deadline, and they've reminded us the second time, and they, and the, and the closing sentences, or could, could, you know, incur consent order for violation, that's reinforcement action.
I agree with that.
I, I think they're.
Yeah, that sounds serious, and we do need to follow up with that.
That's pretty serious, yeah.
But this is about Mirror Lake we're talking about.
It is.
Yes, sir.
They're not talking about the ones that we're making emergency purchase for.
No.
But what, what I wanted to hear Pete say is, what he said is, is this was an opportunity to lump them all together. So that's what we're doing.
Can I make a motion, and then we'll have discussion if we need to?
Right.
I make the motion to approve the emergency purchase for engineering services for inspection of dam structures number 29 and 31 to Walden Ashworth and Associates, Inc., for the lump sum amount of $3,000. This is a budgeted item.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have two seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, sir. I'll move to.
Hold on, so what's the council's direction about this application?
To do it?
I think we need to do it. We, we need to coordinate with the HOA. I, I'm hopeful that they have also filed an application, and that this requirement is that both owners of the, the dam apply.
Pete, is it your understanding that the state gave the HOA an application?
That's correct, and the, the HOA, I believe, was issued a permit back during the original construction of the dam, and, and that has continued on.
I think they just want us as an additional owner, and for us to acknowledge that we.
Yeah, I know what they want. The question is, do y'all want to agree to it?
Right.
Because I'm not going to sign it unless y'all tell me to sign it.
No, I think we already did agree to it before I was on the council, number one. Two, that application was sent to David Milliron back in 2016, not being given copies of it. I know that's your, that's a staff position, but I know that that's the case. And it's been presented multiple times that the city did not do what it was supposed to do and had the information back then. It needs to be done. I understand that they did get that insurance policy, named the city as an additional insured, and they've complied with what they were supposed to do. We haven't done our part, and we need to do that.
Correct.
That would be my position.
That's what I want to know.
And I might add, too, that on this application, I also have a copy of the one that Mr. Milliron filled out. It's, it's only a two-page document, but I was also concerned with, there, there is a, a line here for signature of engineer. So discussion was prompted about, okay, here we've got the engineer that we've employed, but he didn't do, he, he wasn't the engineer of record when the permit was issued to the HOA. So after some discussion with, with EPD, they said to leave this, this blank, because all of this has already been covered with the original engineer. And so basically, it's, it's just information about location of dam and some of the specifics, and, and a signature block for the city manager to sign.
Just to make a point, since we're all have dealt with this since we've been elected up here, is there a notation of who, who you spoke to with EPD, and they said it was okay to leave that blank? And do we have that documented?
Yes, in, in fact, it, it was the engineer we employed that had that conversation with EPD.
I understand it was a conversation. I'm just making, you know, conversations get lost in time. E-mails don't.
I, I have not seen anything in writing from them on that.
David, is that, shouldn't there be a, if something, if, if, if HOA also has to sign something, and EPD, or no, no, I'm sorry, this has to do with, with the engineer.
The engineer.
If the engineer, if EPD said that, no one had to sign that, shouldn't we have that in writing from somewhere?
I do have an email from the engineer that, that categorized what the conversation was.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful to document. Sounds like you've already got that.
I think I do.
We, we seem to run into this a lot, that things aren't documented in the way your members, how they have. Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion in a second. Did you have?
Well, I was just asking, actually, maybe after we do this motion, we need a second motion to authorize staff to submit the application to EPD?
I think so, Tom. You, that's what I heard you say. So this, we'll, we'll, we'll act on the first motion that's on the floor right now. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It is unanimous? And Tom, what would you like the second motion, or David?
I, I think city manager has the authority to, to sign it, but just to give him some backup on it, the, the motion probably would be.
I'd like to then write.
Yeah, the other thing, this is, this had already been.
The, the motion would be to authorize the city manager to file the appropriate application to the EPD to comply with the Safe Dams Act.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number two. Nick, Nick, you haven't been with us for a while.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed you guys.
You got another $500 deal for us tonight?
You know, I actually did save us $500, so I made up on that promise. I'll give you details if you'd like. Excuse my appearance, I didn't have time to freshen up, so I kind of smell a little bit, I'm sure. I don't notice it from here. One of three items I'm presenting. The first is to provide a new meter technician, a means of transportation. This is a budgeted item. The quote that staff is recommending is coming from Don Rich Ford, and it's under budget. We've hired another meter technician, we just don't have the vehicles to spare. There, our fleet is limited with the new employees that we're hiring. So staff recommends that we do purchase this 2019 Ford F-150, but instead of giving a new employee the brand-new vehicle, we want to shuffle some vehicles around. This vehicle, staff would like to allocate to our engineer. It is a crew cab, so he'll be able to chauffeur and, and take various employees and engineers, and what engineers do, you know, the people they associate with. He'll be able to move them around. Purchasing this vehicle will give the engineer a new vehicle. We're going to take the engineer's current vehicle, and we'd like to allocate it to the meter technician we've had on staff for about 18 years, give him a new vehicle to use. That meter technician's vehicle. That meter technician's vehicle will then be issued to the new meter technician. So, I could have explained it better, but it's been a long day, and I apologize.
But you did say it's a budgeted item, right?
It is, and it's under budget. Staff recommends that we purchase 2019 Ford F-150 from Donrich Ford in the amount of $23,950. I believe $26,000 was budgeted.
Okay. I'll make a motion, and we allow city staff to purchase 2019 Ford F-100 from Donrich Ford, the amount of $23,950.
Would you amend that to the Ford F-150? It's not Ford F-100. I just want to make sure the motion's...
I said 150.
Sound like F-100.
Okay, well, it's F-150.
Second.
Have a motion, a second?
I don't even know what a 100 is.
That's, that's an old, old truck. I was talking about those in the eighties.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right. The next item is our spring AC filter change and service. Here in the past, we've always sublet this, or contracted it out to a company that is no longer. That company has merged with the company that we now use for any kind of emergency repair, or really any repair, um, that we need to contract out. This service is to, to ensure proper operation of all of our HVAC units. It's routine maintenance. They'll come in, they'll check pressures, refrigerant, belt tension, and deflection, and make sure all the coals are being cleaned, and also change the filters. Staff recommends that this is done twice a year. This is the first one of this year.
So, Dwayne sold to this other company?
He did. He, he sold, and then he's actually an employee with Action Electric, and he's been wonderful to have on their staff, because heck, I mean, he, this, if we, if we hire Action Electric, it'll be, the city will not have to input any kind of labor, carry them around facilities. Dwayne already knows, you know, he's been...
So, Dwayne's still going to do our work, at least be doing it as part of this other company?
He's, he's moved up a little bit. He's more of an office guy now, but he has made trips out here with his technicians and showed, showed them around. And the techni, the technician he actually had on staff with Advanced Comfort works for Action Electric as well. So, um, staff recommends that the council allow us to hire Action Electric to perform our spring AC filter change and service in the amount of $7,000.
What's that?
No, I'm just trying to...
He always reads the motion. How many units is this? I see that you've delineated each location, but how many units are involved?
Involved total, it, I don't have an exact number, um, which I probably should have brought to you guys. But there's multiple, the only, there's multiple units at every location, the most being like, I think, 12, and the least being one at the, I know I didn't sum anything up right there, but...
I don't remember this coming before us last year. Did it come before us last year?
Last year, we, instead of making it a whole service, we, he came out, and he actually charged us for each individual location, each individual unit that he serviced. So, I mean, it was pennies to the dollar compared to the $7,000 we're asking for now. And it was just part of, hey, can you come out and do our spring AC service? And that's how we're actually going to bill it. Like, the budget, the money's going to come out of each facility's building and maintenance and repair budget.
I don't mean to pick on you, Nick, but you said it's pennies to the dollar, but how much did we spend on that?
Last year?
Yeah, when we, after we figured it all up, and it broke it down into each individual location.
I, I can't recall last year, and I don't want to, I don't want to go on record saying an amount that might not be accurate.
I, I don't know if $7,000 is a fair price for that. It doesn't sound like to me that it would not be, but I think some of that information would have been helpful, at least to me, as I, as I decide to spend $7,000.
Right.
Uh, but there are a number of locations, I suspect, that we're talking about, quite a few units. You said some locations have as many as 12?
Yes, sir. And then, some of them are hard to get to, like over at our Bonnie Building. One is literally in between the office and the roof, that they have to actually crawl on their hands and knees to get to. It's quite an extensive service.
If we're doing this twice a year, are we using six-month filters?
Yes, sir, we are.
Sure?
Yes, sir.
It's got a list of the buildings, but not all the places.
That's right.
No, I'm sorry.
But, but that's okay, no.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that, to allow the city to hire action electrical and mechanical contractors to complete the spring AC filter change and service in the amount of $7,000.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, second bottom. You can hit that. Okay. Any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Vote is 3-1.
No, we, yeah, it's something that we have to do. I could have done a little bit more diligence on getting you information.
No, I wouldn't pick on you. You're just a homeowner. It's one of those things that you need to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Item number four.
All right. The next item is, um, a request to surplus a 2001 Ford Ranger. This has been in our fleet for quite a while, and it has gotten its fair share of use out of the vehicle. The last job it had was to actually go get bales of wheat straw and hay for the animals over at Pine Mountain. As it's sitting right now, it probably needs about $3,000 to $4,000 to get it actually roadworthy and safe to drive. There's a number of issues wrong with it, including the windshield wiper motor, the gauge cluster, the restraint system is not operating correctly, um, the body's barely used.
You're, you're being kind.
I am being kind.
I read the write-up. You want a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I motion that we allow the city to surplus and sell the 2001 Ford Ranger with the VIN number ending in 9393.
On govdeals.net?
Please.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. As far as discussion, I would point out, that's the year I started with the city. That's how old that is.
Wow.
All in favor?
I think so.
It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab E, Jim? If y'all haven't seen Jim's office while he's making his way up, it's, it's a far cry from the office he used to have. And I'm sure he thanks y'all.
Which one?
Well, you were in a closet.
Yeah, you were in a, in a safe.
A utility closet.
Closet, old library. I lose track.
One time he was in a safe.
The first on the, on the agenda for me is the security system, security camera system update, phase two, doing the PD. Um, there's a lot more mission critical. This will get their interview rooms in line, both in the detectives' offices, as well as the actual interview rooms themselves, the lobbies, and a little bit better coverage.
Is that, is that your whole presentation?
It's for Relico.
It's a budgeted item. I'm good.
It is.
It's Relico, yeah. I'll make the motion, we utilize Relico for phase two of the security camera system upgrade for an amount not to exceed $55,960, and this is a budgeted item.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you, sir. Item number two.
The next is to ratify the emergency purchase of WatchGuard LCOM Evidence Library. This is the service they use for their body cams, dash cams. Uh, the current server we have right now is somewhere between 10 and eight years old. To put in perspective, the workstations that I order right now have 16 gigs of RAM. This has half that. It's a pretty old server. It's, uh, it's been running fairly well. What's happening now, though, is drives are starting to fall out of the array. Typically, it's not a big deal. If you have a good backup, you make sure you have a good backup, you rebuild the array, and everything's good. Um, there's no way to back up 23 terabytes, seven years' worth of data. That would cost us a lot more money than what I have presented here, um, to do that effectively. And with that happening, WatchGuard even recommended that we, we do go to cloud, check with other municipalities. This is a headache nobody wants. Everybody is pretty much going to cloud for these services these days just because of the sheer amount of data that you're putting out there each day. With this, it is truly disaster recovery. It's with Microsoft Azure Cloud Services, so it's backed up from coast to coast, but from North Carolina all the way to Washington.
This is the one you briefed us on in the, the email? And this is an unbudgeted item?
I was hoping we could go along until, until the next budget process, because we can't really migrate the current data, because they don't have a process for that yet either. But, um, I've, I've went through extensive talks with WatchGuard and went up the chain. We are now on the beta, beta list, number one on the beta list, to be the first ones to try out and migrate our current server so that we can get that offline. This is basically to eliminate the read writes to a disk. That's what kills a disk and causes a server to fail. So, we'll, by eliminating that, our, the server should be good going forward, and all new data will be uploaded, and it'll give us ease of use to, for warrants and stuff like that as well.
But it's too critical for you to take a chance and not do this now?
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion...
Have you noticed that the word "emergency" is coming up a lot here?
I make the motion, we ratify the purchase of WatchGuard EIC. Wait a minute, what does that say?
It's, I'm sorry, it's LCOM, Evidence Library, E-L-COM.
E-L-COM?
Correct.
Let me re, let me do it again. I make the motion, we ratify the purchase of WatchGuard E-L-COM for the price of $42,360. And you're right, that word come up a lot.
Motion to second, discussion?
Just a real quick question. I noticed in the price quote from them, it said it was an estimate. So, is that 42,360 going to stay there, or is it going to move around?
It's actually going to stay there, and I've, I've got them also committed coming onsite, doing training, installation, and that is also still within this quote.
Okay, all right, because the stuff I was reading that we're backing up look like stuff you cannot afford to li, wasn't have to do with...
We're getting more than what's listed in that quote for that price.
Okay, thank you.
David, this is a question for you, and maybe the chief, too. I just got to ask it, because, because I, since this is a cloud-based service, is, is there any concern on your part that the, the records aren't necessarily in our...
We own the data at any time. According to WatchGuard, we can take the data at any time, even if we discontinue the service.
The problem with a cloud-based service is that, that someone other than us has access to it potentially.
Yeah, and, and to answer your question, Mayor, I have concerns about it, but not such concerns that I'd say we shouldn't do it, because, I mean, I have concerns about everything floating around out in there in the air.
Apparently, there's not a safe computer out there, so everybody gets hacked into these days, so...
The story has to be practical.
They currently have direct access to our servers and body cams as we speak right now.
Just wanted to ask that, because...
Yeah, it's a legitimate concern. I just don't know that there's any solution. If, if the federal government or Department of Defense can't solve it, I don't know that we can.
I know all my photographs go to a cloud, and, you know, that's okay, because they're all fine, but I don't want anybody stealing my photographs. Okay.
I've already got a copy.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Jim. Tab F, Sarah?
Why would anybody want to copy your photographs?
Good evening.
People steal those things. They plagiarize them.
This is our financial update for March. And this is the first six months of the fiscal year. It's our cash for the end of March compared to last March. Total checking accounts were $9.7 million last year. Now, they are $12.2 million. Those top three, general fund, water sewer fund, and sanitation fund, they are all part of our pooled cash account, but the, the system accounts for, uh, the money due to them, and the money that they, these funds owe to the other funds. So, you can see general fund has grown about 1.4 million in this year. Water sewer fund has also grown about $600,000. Our sanitation, uh, still shows a negative balance. Um, our audit is still, um, in the works, so I expect when we get the final numbers back from the auditors, they'll be adjusting the September balance from the end of the last fiscal year. So, that number may look different the last time you see, the next time you see that. But it's much smaller than where we were. Last year was a negative $384,000 at the end of the previous fiscal year. Those next three balances are our SPOLOST accounts. Those are separate bank accounts, but you can see, we still have some money in our old SPOLOST account, and our 15 and 16 SPOLOST are shown there. This is our growth that we like to show, uh, new building permits for residential and commercial. We thought last year was really good, and it was, and this year we, uh, have gone even 20 more building permits on the residential side in six months compared to last year. And water taps, sewer taps are keeping in line with that. This is our water and sewer income statement. So, we were not on a October to September fiscal year last year. However, for ease of comparison, we are comparing the same six-month periods. So, this is six months ended March 2018 compared to six months ended March 2019. Now, the March 2019, that is after two rate increases have occurred, the first one being in February of 2018, and the second one being in January of 2019. So, you can see the growth in revenue there. And the other item pointing out there is, we, we did a reorg in this fiscal year. That's why you see a new department, the utility administrator there. But we are positive in 2019 in our water sewer fund compared to the loss of $213,000 last year. Any questions on that? This is our sanitation fund, again, a six-month comparison of the same months, and this is two rate increases again. Uh, we're starting to creep back into the red a little bit now after six months, but much better than where we were last year.
So, we have overcome the six-month change, and now everything should start being compared apples to apples?
Well, the problem is, so the first period we're comparing is October of 2017 to March of 2018. So, October, November, and December of 2017, we're in a previous fiscal year, but I'm, I'm showing it that way so that y'all can see the true comparison. Sales tax is up about 15% in both counties. So, last year, we had $1 million. Now, we have almost $1.2 million for the six months. Hotel tax revenue is up, and our SPOLOST is also up compared to the prior year. Number of employees, we went from 147 to 160. And this is our self-funded insurance. So, our total savings so far is $700,000 since we have been on the program, which was October of 2017. Now, at the last council meeting, they presented the awards for over $1 million in savings. What they were looking at is how much we have saved had, if we had gone on and stayed fully funded for this time period, we would have spent $1 million more than what we have actually spent. So, that's why their savings looks different than ours. Ours is actually on the books, savings. Theirs is if we had gone fully funded, they were projecting out what the increases would have been year to year. So, in this fiscal year, we have put in $800,000 in contributions from employers and employees, and we have paid out $667,000. Those are actual claims to doctors and pharmacies, and administrative fees to our third-party administrators. So, in this fiscal year so far, we've saved $134,000.
But overall, since we started, our total savings is $700,000.
Yes, that green number at the top.
$697,342.
I'm going to call it $700.
You, you can. I just wanted people to be able to follow along.
Any questions on that? All right. Next is an item that we discussed at the financial committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted it, the whole council to see this. We did, um, in November of last year, the council approved writing off $31,000 in bad debt for customers. That's uncollectible receivables. That had built up on the books from November of 2017 to September of 2018. And before that, in February of 2018, we wrote off $95,000. Uh, we've talked about it several times. The biggest impact we can make is in-house. So, in April of, so a year ago, council approved to increase our deposit amounts, and that was, I think that was the most significant change. Also, we've changed cycle billing. Um, we've been cutting people off in a more frequent, not letting them get as far out. So, this has been six months since you last approved writing off balances. And at the end of March, there were 88 closed accounts that still have balances due to us. The total on those was $13,540. That is 0.37% of our total revenue for the same six months. Of those 88 accounts, 68 of them were still under the old deposit amount. So, it's been a year since we raised deposit amounts, but most of the people that have finalized their bills have, have been customers before the new deposit structure was put into place. So, if those customers, those 68 that still had the $100 deposit, had had the higher rate, we, that $13,000 bad uncollectible debt would have been about $5,000 less.
So, this had an incredible impact.